Good evening, everyone. I'll call the City Council to order at eight o'clock on Monday, April 22nd, 2024. This meeting is being recorded. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have seventeen items on this evening's agenda, and I will ask the city clerk to please read Agenda Item Number One.
Minutes of the City Council Meeting, April 8th, 2024.
Counselor Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to Accept and Place on File the Minutes. Thank you.
Motion made and seconded to Accept and Place on File the Minutes. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none of those in favor. Opposed. The meeting minutes are filed 11-0. Agenda Item Number Two.
Now is the time for the public hearing on the petition of Massachusetts Electric in Verizon, New England to install one joint-owned pole on Simarano Drive, beginning at a point approximately 246 feet southwest of the center line of the intersection of Cedar Hill Street, install 50 feet of C1.2 midspan between Pole One and Two, and install feeder monitor on the new midspan pole. Order number 24-109138. In addition, we have a communication from City Engineer Thomas De Persio with recommended conditions for the petition from Mass Electric in Verizon, New England.
Okay, this public hearing we've taken up in four stages. First, with the public speaking in favor. Second, questions from the public. Third, public speaking in opposition. And finally, questions from the City Council. I'll open the first part of the public hearing with the public speaking in favor, starting with the applicant. Please come up, state your name and address, and describe the project.
Hello, Michael Fraser, National Grid 245 South Main Street, Hoptown. This is to install Pole 1-50 in between existing Poles One and Two on Simarano Drive. I got that right this time. Again, to install a feeder monitor, similar to the last project.
Any else that could? Anyone else speaking in favor? Anyone else speaking in favor? Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing. Questions from the public. Any questions from the public? Any questions from the public? Seeing none, I close that portion of the public hearing. Public speaking in opposition. Any members of the public speaking in opposition? Members of the public speaking in opposition? Seeing none, I close that portion of the public hearing. Questions from the City Council. Counselor Dusset.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Actually, just have one question, just for clarification. What is exactly the feeder monitor? Is that a feedback system or?
Yes, so we can tell where the voltage levels are down the line, so we can send feedback to the substation.
Okay. And what is this installation for?
I'm sorry?
What is the installation for?
A pole.
Yeah, no, no, no. Who's the customer? Who's the client that's?
We are.
Is it something that you're expecting demand, or you're trying to balance existing demand?
With the addition of all the solar, you know, every time this cloud goes by, those voltages go up and down, so we're able to see the feedback of real-time voltage, so the substation can power up or power down as needed.
Okay, okay. Thank you for that. Appreciate the clarification.
Thank you, Counselor Dusset. Any other questions from the City Councilors? Any other questions? Any other questions? Any other questions from the City Councilors? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing. And the entire public hearing, Counselor Landers.
Mr. President, the fact that, you know, we've had no concerns from the abutters or even tonight, Mr. President, I'm going to make the motion to approve petition subject to the city engineer's recommendation.
Motion made and seconded to approve the petition along with the city engineers' standard conditions. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none of those in favor. Opposed. The petition is approved with the DPW conditions 11-0. Agenda Item Number Three.
Now is the time for the public hearing on petition of Massachusetts Electric in Verizon, New England to install one joint-owned pole on Cashman Street, beginning at a point approximately 100 feet southeast of the center line of the intersection of Lincoln Street, installing new Pole 2-5 on Cashman Street to serve a customer at 272 Lincoln Street. Order number 24-109139. In addition, we have a communication from City Engineer Thomas De Persio with recommended conditions for the petition.
Again, this public hearing we've taken up in four stages. First, with the public speaking in favor. Second, questions from the public. Third, public speaking in opposition. And then finally, questions from the City Council. So we'll start with the first part of the public hearing. Public speaking in favor, starting with the applicant. Please state your name and record, name and address for the record, Mike.
Michael Fraser, National Grid 245 South Main Street, Hoptown. This is to install Pole 2-50 in between existing Poles Two and Pole Three, in line with the current wires for, to serve as a riser pole for a new service to 272 Lincoln Street.
Thank you, Mike. Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing. Any questions from the public? Any questions from the public? Any questions from the public? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing. Any members of the public speaking in opposition? Members of the public speaking in opposition? Any members of the public speaking in opposition? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing. Any questions from the City Council? Questions from the City Council? Any questions from the City Council? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing, the entire public hearing. Counselor Landers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Likewise, because we've heard no concern with the abutters, I am going to make the motion, President, that we approve this subject to the petition, subject to the city engineer's recommendation.
Motion made and seconded to approve the conditions, approve the petition subject to the conditions identified by the city engineer. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none of those in favor. Opposed. The petition is approved with the conditions identified by the city engineer, and the vote's 11-0. Thank you, Mike. Agenda Item Number Four.
Now is the time for the public hearing of the proposed zoning amendment, Code Chapter 650 zoning, to create the Lazott Drive Overlay District. Order number 24-109121. And in addition, we have a communication from Attorney George Bannon with updated copies of the proposed zoning amendment to create the Lazott Drive Overlay District.
Again, this public hearing we've taken up in four stages. First, with the public speaking in favor. Second, questions from the public. Third, public speaking in opposition. And then finally, questions from the City Council. And again, we'll start the public hearing with the public speaking in favor. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is David Ferris. I'm the CEO of Ferris Development at 118 Turnpike Road in Southboro, Mass. And I'm here tonight to discuss the 130 Lazott. Thank you, President Osling, and the council members, to talk about our recent acquisition of an office building with approximately 12 acres spread between two parcels. This is a office building that's had some significant challenges post-COVID and pre-COVID. It's been vacant for about a decade, and what we're proposing with the city is to get a zoning overlay that would allow us to improve the property with about 184 sale units in that area in the form of repurposing the existing building for about 75 units and adding to additional buildings on the parcel. By way of background, I've been tied to the Marlborough community since a young law school graduate. My first home was over at 24 High Street, and I had the blessing of growing up with a great neighbor, Jerry Dumas, and I'm thrilled to see his son doing so well. And so I located my business here originally as a new spinoff when I broke away and opened my business in 2010. And I've been intimately involved with the city and worked successfully with the city in the past on a number of different issues with Mayor Vigian and Wes Tuttle, who is a, God rest his soul, lovely man, and my neighbor over at 325 Donald Lynch. I think this zoning overlay request could really benefit the city. We're really taking what I would consider a tax-defeated asset, and I say tax-defeated because it, you know, its peak probably enjoyed about a $15 million tax assessed value. And, you know, we recently purchased the asset for about four, four and a half million. And I think that it could potentially be a very positive community development, given its location and proximity to some ballparks and some potential partnership where we could provide some parking, and we could provide some relief to the city around some strategic initiatives around a fire station and other things. And so I'm here before the council tonight to enter into a long-term partnership, and this, in our view, would be one of our first strategic developments with the city. I think unfortunately, this is going to be a song that you probably hear played over and over again with the post-pandemic office environment being as challenging as it is. I think one of the unique things about this project that's different is these office buildings all have a depth to them that really is built for office use rather than residential. The beauty of this site, and I think for the city's benefit, is the office piece that can't be used, the inner depth of the office, where you just can't build without windows. We can reutilize and repurpose those unused spaces for common area to support the other two buildings and have less common area in the two additional buildings. The overlay originally requested contractor's yard and self-storage. We met with our neighbors and your constituents and heard their feedback and really think the community's looking for more residential use in this area, and I think it fits more with the characteristics of what's there. So I think if the council so decides, we're fine with residential. We opened a very successful new venture in Southboro, which is our first facility for a contractor storage facility. It's been really well embraced over on Turnpike Road Beehive, and it's been leasing up really, really well. But we originally envisioned that for this space, but after listening to feedback from the community, I think the valuation on the tax and the overall use and fit for this particular area at the end of a dead-end road could be a win-win for the city and us. And I would view this as a first request with the city. I think you're going to see other office buildings with similarly, similar issues where they're long-term challenged at occupancy for utilization as office. So I think you're going to see more of these conversion plays. And, you know, I love to say this, which is you've got to put your money where your mouth is. And I've bragged about Marlborough and Arthur's work back in the day when I used to see how successful he worked with us over at Donald Lynch, bringing some really marquee community, corporate tenants like NASDAQ and other to your community over the 10-plus years that we had our headquarters over at 325 Donald Lynch. And I think Marlborough's always been on the cutting edge, and I think this trend is going to go national in terms of this conversion from office to other uses. And I think that this could be a real signature project for both your community and for our firm, and I think it's a mutually beneficial opportunity. And, you know, I was watching one of your big corporate tenants, Ken's, working in another community nearby that I'm very close to, and them struggling in that community and how well, you know, they've done in your community, and the fact that Ken's wants to expand is very obvious by the way this council and the community treats them as corporate tenants. But anyway, so I've been around Marlborough a long time, and I think it could be a really great transaction. With that, I think I'd open it to questions.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. Any other members of the public wishing to speak in favor? Any other members of the public wishing to speak in favor? Help yourself to the microphone right with the podium back here. There you go. Thank you. Name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, 43 Forest Street. The house right in front of the building which you're proposing. I do, I agree 100% with the residential. I think it would be a great, because I see that building just going downhill. I see people driving on that street at night and use all sorts of kind of crazy drugs and everything. So I think being kind of developed and people going over there for the right reasons, I 100% agree with it. You know what I mean? As far as the storage and the yard for the contractors, not so great, not a great idea. But, you know, as far as the apartment buildings for people, low-income housing as well, part of it, at least, I oppose at all.
I apologize. I did not catch your name.
My first name is Fernando, last name is Severo.
Fernando, thank you very much, Fernando.
Yeah, all right. Thank you.
Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing. Questions from the public. Are there any questions from the public? Yes, sir.
Good evening. Kevin McDonald, 19 Forest Street. You just talked about 180 units residential?
Yes.
Can you break that down by apartments, condos?
Yeah, so they would all be for-sale units. We met with several of the community constituents and really had heard there's kind of an oversupply, for lack of a better term, of rental units. And so we're really trying to put a project forward at a later date if the zoning overlay is given. That would be for owner occupants, for a contingent piece of it to be low-income or, you know, these are working people with decent jobs and livings, but it'd be 15% would be affordable, is the way I would put it. But they would be all condominiums. There are people who'd have a vested interest and stake in staying there and being part of the community.
And that would be through all three?
So, yes. So that's a good question. The office building would have a repurpose to about 70 to 80 units, and then there would be two standalone buildings that would have about 65 and 45 units. So the important point, I think, would be, a lot of these legacy office buildings have tremendous huge parking lots, and so we're not looking to cut down any trees. We're not looking to disturb any more earth. We would literally just take existing old asphalt and put the buildings where that asphalt is. Yep. Thanks for the question. Yep.
Yes, come on right up.
Hi, my name is Karen Parkett. I live at 290 Clover Hill Street. I've lived there for 30 years, which is directly at the Jackson, Lazott, Williams. And you keep talking about talking, reaching out to constituents. I wasn't contacted. My neighbors weren't contacted. Who did you speak to?
First, I would like to apologize if we didn't speak directly with you. We spoke with the parties that were getting the zoning change potential overlay, St. Mary's Credit Union being one of them, the Montessori School and the direct abutters that were in the proposed zoning overlay. But George, our attorney, who's sitting here, would have sent out the notices and whatnot, and we're happy to meet with you offline.
Well, none of us got them. I don't know if Mr. Severo got one.
I got one. I got a little bit late, but I was in contact beside the ladder.
Right.
Which actually I did call that attorney today. I left him a message to kind of see about the zone.
Fernando, I appreciate you, but you can get back up if you want to speak, but you're not on the microphone.
I have any questions, but I'm.
That's okay. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mr. Severo. I'm happy to hear that you just said that no green space is going to be disturbed.
Right.
Only asphalt. A bobcat lives there and ended up in my backyard the other day.
Oh, cool.
Well, it's cool, but he's being put out of his environment. We have turtles, we have swans, we have ducks, we have Jackson Farm there, we have Millbrook there. What environmental concerns have been considered? I used to be able to buy corn down the end of the street at the Jackson Farm. And to hear that you're not going to disturb anything, I hope that that's a true statement.
Right, no, it definitely.
Meadows that they have there right now are beautiful. And what are we going to do with the wildlife and the deer and everything that live there? We just invested millions of dollars in a beautiful boardwalk, which I can't wait to run across. And that area, we just spent millions of dollars making it a usable space, and now we're going to put, and I'm also very happy that the storage, the landscaping, and everything else was taken off if it's residential, and that they're condos. I guess that makes it a little bit more palatable. But again, what is your plan for the displacement of the animals and?
Yeah, those are very, very good questions, and I want to assure you that we have looked at that issue very carefully. And what's unique about this parcel is between the office building and the parking lot, there was an enament domain taken years ago, which can never be touched, which is the power company, and that would be part of the change, but in terms of the overlay, but they would not be able to, for lack of a better term, build on it. But more importantly, I want to give you this safeguard, and it's a safeguard that runs with the land in terms of its state rules and regulations. But there is some waterway in that runs through this parcel we're discussing, and there are state rules regarding how many feet in each direction you have to be, which is about 200 on each side. And so what I want to give you the assurance tonight is our proposal only includes disturbing the existing hot top, and not all of it, just some of it, and to keep, retain parking. But I want to promise you, our footprint doesn't encroach even one foot into natural habitat or space that's there currently. It is literally repurposing the existing building and then putting two additional buildings on parking lot space that will not disrupt any of the natural wetlands or the river stream shed there.
Or the meadow that's between?
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry. I didn't even see this. Yeah.
The meadow that's between the daycare and St. Mary's Credit Union, that's not going to be disturbed?
No, it's not. So the proposal really is, this is the existing office building up here. This is parking lot currently.
Yes.
And so Building B would be on existing parking lot. Building C would be the same thing, on existing parking lot. And we were careful to maintain an existing parking ratio where all the cars could still fit within the existing non-pervious surface. Now, what's important is, when this was originally permitted and built, this parking lot extended out into this area, which in today's day and age, with this wetland and this water running through here, wouldn't be permitted. So we originally looked at concepts where, you know, we could do a turnaround for the fire department. And what I want to share is, based on some community feedback, we shrunk the size of this building and skipped putting another building here so that we wouldn't encroach in any of this natural space and ask for relief to be in this area, which regulatory-wise would have created a whole bunch of exceptions and variances. So we tried to shrink it to a point where it was really the best of both worlds, where we're taking, like, for lack of a better term, very old parking lots and converting them into some space. And we are working with the city, and this would all come out. You would have a very strong voice, and I'd welcome you to talk with us privately and openly.
Oh, I would love to.
Yeah, when this is going to go forward, if the zoning relief is given, and we're about to try and get an actual permit to build, we're going to have concessions where we meet with the city and we do the right thing, and we don't just, like, I have this big expression, you don't treat people like ATMs. We're not going to treat this community like an ATM. We're going to make goodwill deposits to the community, and we're going to hope that when we need to make withdrawal, that the city's going to give us a permit to do it. But the point, I think, is, we've talked about potentially carving out parking spaces where there could be trail access so that people who want to access the new trails and stuff over here could do that. We're talking about coming up with some dollar amount per unit that we can contribute back into the local fire station to be built. We originally had some contractor buildings. I can't see them here because George thoughtfully took them off the plan, but there used to be some contracting stuff that we were putting at the lower side, and we heard from the community that nobody really wants contractor stuff in that area, so we scratched it in between the meetings. So that's kind of where things are at.
How tall is the residential complex going to be?
I believe it's, so the Building B is four stories, Building A is four stories, and Building C is five stories. So, you know, it's all within the height limits that are there now.
They would block the beautiful sunsets that we currently get now without the buildings being five stories tall?
Right. Yeah, I'm not sure how that would work topography.
Maybe you should come over and look at a sunset from our perspective.
Okay.
Our corner, where we live, has, I have an acre of property.
Okay.
My neighbors have two acres combined.
Yeah.
We have done everything, including with the Jackson family, to make sure that our neck of the woods, the state is natural-looking as it can. And I would implore you all to give as much thought as to what's going to happen to that lake. Everyone's already up in arms about how much trash, how many people are going to drown in the lake due to the boardwalk, the increased number of children, what's it going to do to our schools. I'm not too sure that that's, and so that can come up here. Are we building another school to house everybody?
Yeah, on that issue, I think you've raised another very good point that we try to put some forethought into, which is, when the permitting request would come in, we would work very closely with the councilors and particularly the ward head in this area, which we've already spoken to, in terms of formulating a unit mix that's consistent with the city's goals in terms of attracting young entrepreneur, technology-oriented people, and making the bedroom count specifically, you know, tailored in a way that maybe would encourage less children and more young professionals who are looking for an affordable place to live.
Cleanliness.
Yep.
How is that going to be handled to make sure that the trash doesn't, we also have a rat problem.
Yeah.
Trash doesn't pile up. It sounds like they're going to be higher-scale apartments, so maybe they'll need a better job. But we don't have a rat problem in our area right now. We keep our neighborhoods very clean, and so I can't be next to the lake.
Yeah, these would all be things that I can assure you, we're at the stage now where we would look for the zoning overlay, and if the overlay is granted, we would then come before the city for very specific concrete, line item by line item, for lack of a better term, requirements before the project could go forward that meet you as neighbors' goals and our goals and the city's goals. So all of those things about trash removal, screening, height, all of those types of really serious things that could impact how you live your life daily, you would have a voice in that permitting period to get changes made that work for you and your neighbors.
Are you planning on having it to be a gated community, for lack of a better term?
I don't think we're planning on having gates, per se, at the entrance of the property at this point, but we haven't looked at that yet.
Yeah, well, the kids will still go and hang out and start fires and all those other things without, you know, having, just concerned. It's a place with derelicts, and people that want to get into trouble, hang out at night, and.
Yeah, I really want this to be a flagship product that the city is proud to have endorsed and to be a developer in this community, that when I come before the city again, I've done a job that mimics what I've said.
Okay.
And it's a quality product that ultimately lifts your home value, doesn't detract from it.
I hope so. Thank you for listening to my questions. I truly appreciate it.
Thank you, Karen. Any other questions from the public? Any other questions from the public? Any other questions from the public? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing. Public speaking in opposition? Public speaking in opposition? Yep, come on up. Please state your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Emily Welton. I live at 250 Williams Street. I live in the old farmhouse right in the corner of everything. It's been in my family since 1860. It was built in 1860. It's been in my family since 1860. I literally have pictures inside the house hanging, horse and buggy before anything was around. My parents grew up in Marlborough. My father grew up in Marlborough before 495 was there. I came to the meeting a few years ago to oppose putting the Montessori School across the street in the swampland, where they said they couldn't build. I would go to Jackson Farm and get food, corn growing up, and have the farm in my entire life. When people come into a community and say they want to build, and it's in the best interest of the community, I'm a history teacher. I've taught in the city for 18 years. I teach civics right now. I get that people want to come in and make money, and that you say it's for the best interest of the community. But part of me loves to hold on to the greatness that started this community in the first place. And everything just changes so fast that I can't even keep up. It's like my head's spinning as to what's going on. I was never contacted about this. When you said, you know, once again, speaking with the constituents, I had no idea until my neighbors told me that this meeting was happening tonight. As I said, as being a teacher, the schools are so overcrowded, and we do not even have the staff to support the populations that we have, and we're bringing in more families. And yes, I looked across the street for my whole life growing up and saw fields, and now I see the Montessori School in the bright lights at night, always on at my windows in this old farmhouse, bright lights. I get that I can't hold on to that change. But now a potentially four- or five-story building goes up? It's just, I know you said you lived in Marlborough, but now you live in Southboro. Would you want this to go up next to you in Southboro? There's no way. Southbrows like Marlborough and Northboro and Westboro and these other communities that kind of say, no. Marlborough's night. Marlboro's night and day different from it was when I grew up here and from it was 10 or 20 years ago. I used to go running down Ames and Simirano, and I brought my son to a birthday party there a few years ago. I had no idea any of those apartments. I knew Stonegate was there, but the building and the building and the building is out of control, in my opinion. Like, why can't we, once again, the animals there, the bobcat running around, like, we can't preserve any land? What, I guess my question is, what type of community is Marlboro looking to hold on to? Are we trying to attract people that want to contribute to the history and like the future of our city, or it's like kind of influx, come and go and make money, buy the next best thing and the greatest thing? And you said the building up on top of the hill, it was struggling before COVID? Well, why was it struggling? And the office building on the bottom of, when I was in elementary school, like, it was empty right at the bottom of William Street for like decade, like, over a decade easily before someone just went in. So, but the city said, we gotta put up office buildings, like, literally, the Jackson area, Montessori, up at the top of the hill across, and then there, these office buildings, many have been vacant my whole life, and like now the storage, I'm definitely against storage, but I don't know. Like, when you say it's great for the community, I don't know how. And many of people say it's great for your community, and then you build it, make money, and then leave, and this is not your community. I don't want to leave my house, it's been in my family forever, it's something that I'm proud of, but there's not much that wants to keep me here anymore. The land and everything is gone, and I'm sorry that I'm emotional, but not being asked about this stuff, and I feel like it doesn't even matter what I say in like words, because you have Mr. Jackson Kimmon to fight the building across the street, and businesses and money talk, and I don't have money. So, like, I get it. So I just hope that people who are building in this community realize the families that have been here for so long, and are lifers and generations in this city, and are committed here, we, many of us don't like it.
No, I think it's very fair. The only, I would hope, words I could share in response, because I understand change is hard for everybody, including me, is what we're trying to propose, I really want to differentiate from a lot of what you're seeing in your community, which is this, for lack of a better term, transient housing, people coming in and renting, and developers putting up massive projects that are all rental. These potentially are new families that are getting a foothold in your community to live there. These are, we're proposing condominiums that'll be sold to, you know, maybe kids of yours one day. And so this is a little different product than what I think the mass production has been happening. And we kind of came to that conclusion from listening to a lot of different voices in the community, and I want to just reiterate again, this is like the first step, it's not the last. And the idea behind doing this response was to meet with you when we get to the point where we're gonna propose a permit or a site plan, and the height and the location and all the variables that are gonna affect you living next door, that's the whole point of being a good developer in the community. So.
But, like, even like, like, the fire trucks and like that are constantly coming by my house, now that, like, once again, Stonegate, the burrows, like, the Talia Apartments, whatever. So it's just like, how many apartments does Marlboro have to build? Like, where are all of these people coming from in the last, like, 10 years? Like, they have, the amount of building, it's just, it's crazy. And I get that, and I'm glad that you wouldn't touch any forest land, but as I said, like, the classrooms are struggling to support these students. Marlboro's gonna need another school, like, and I know it's a little bit off topic, but it relates, like, Goodnow's over max capacity, we built it on free land, like, we better be, if we're gonna keep building, the city has to be ready to build another school and get teachers that can teach the diverse community that we are right now.
Yeah.
Like, this all has to be brought in, like, when we...
I would 100% agree.
Okay, I just wanna, all great points, but I'm focusing on the zoning change. This isn't to solve all the Marlboro issues.
Okay, so the zoning, yeah, I guess I'd rather have it like probably residential and then business, I don't know. Once again, I would have liked a little bit of time to think about this, but I literally found out a day ago, I had no idea this was even happening.
Right.
So, I went, once again, letters were sent out and constituents were spoken to about it, the three of us in the corner weren't, so I just don't know who is being spoken to about it. So that's my, I guess that's very alarming to me. Thank you.
Any other members of the public speaking in opposition? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Eileen Welton, Emily's mother, and I've been right across the street from Lazard for 43 years now, in the house that my husband was born in, his uncle built. His grandmother grew up and lived in the house next to us that Emily lives in. I agree with everything Emily has said and my neighbor Karen has said. My main concern is that with an office building, we have traffic Monday through Friday. With a residential complex, we get traffic now seven days a week. The traffic on William Street is horrendous. I can't even get out of my driveway in the morning because of amps of the traffic going to the school. You gotta do something about traffic. Right now, they come out of Jackson Way, I don't think you can take a left-hand turn there, it's not allowed, you have to go right. So is that gonna force everybody out of Lazard? Bring in all that traffic and by my backyard of butts, Lazard? And it's just something you really have to think about. I don't think you're getting the picture, maybe you've never lived in a country setting before, and it's really sad to see that we're losing that in Marlboro. We have just too many buildings that have been put up the last 10, 20 years, and it's just, I wish you'd give it a second thought, I wish you'd slow down the construction in Marlboro, and just give it a rest, a pause for a good 10 years, and it's just getting out of control. Thank you.
Thank you, Eileen. Any other members of the public speaking in opposition? Yes, Karen?
Hi, I'm Karen Ann Parkett, 290 Cloverhill Street, still for 30 years in Marlboro, Massachusetts. Just want to go officially on record that I am opposing the overlay, but I do want to say that I certainly would not fight the good fight as much if it was only residential, so, and that you included us in the process ongoing.
Thank you, Karen. Any other members of the public speaking in opposition? Any members of the public speaking in opposition? Members of the public speaking in opposition? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing. Questions from the city councilors? Questions from the city councilors? Councilor Brown?
Thank you, President Osing, and thank you for joining us to answer questions. Seeing as the property required is currently zoned for different purposes than residential, you're looking for the overlay, I always like to kind of take into consideration some of the things that could possibly be built by right as it currently stands, and so I was wondering if you could possibly share with us and the public what may be built by right if this overlay weren't approved? Thank you.
George, I'll let you answer that question.
Yes. Yeah, turn the, just press the button in the middle, green light on.
Oh, there we go. George Bonner, Assistant General Counsel for Ferris Development. By right uses, we have explored, but it being an existing office building, it really wouldn't make sense to switch it to another use. We, like I said, we have explored it, and nothing really made sense, and that's why we had to propose this zoning amendment, because we had to think outside the box and what we could use this 100,000-square-foot office building, how we could utilize it in ways that hasn't been utilized before. So to answer your question, we have explored other uses, but nothing just worked out.
Yeah, I mean, the obvious things that by right could go there wouldn't, you know, for example, we got approached by a local church to utilize the building as a church. That would effectively hit the city even harder than it's already been hit in the last 10 years, because it would drop off the tax rolls completely. You know, we, the prior, this property's traded hands three times with different people that tried to make a go of it as office and failed, which is why it got auctioned off by the buyer that we bought it from, bought it from auction. And so, you know, because of its depressed price, a lot of like what I would call scavenger developers trying to do things like, well, could we do medical marijuana in this location? You know, there's a school there, so maybe it's just outside the distance. There's a whole bunch of things that developers before us kind of explored and abandoned, and ultimately, that's why they sold the property. There was even a user buyer that bought the property to use it as an office building, but the conversion cost to get it to where it needed to be from some of the functional obsolescence in the building didn't make sense and don't pencil out. And the reality is, is these buildings are basically gonna be empty zombies if we don't do something with them. And this is sort of the start, to be totally blunt with this community tonight, there's gonna be a lot more empty buildings. And, you know, I think you raise a great point, which is, you know, your legacy Marlboro residents and, you know, the pressure of tax in all of these communities is going higher every day, and a lot of the legacy families are getting pushed out because the tax rates go so high. Marlboro has a split rate as it is, but the point is, this is a use where the additional tax does dramatically affect the city's budget. I mean, it goes from a $4 million valuation to something like 60 taxable. So that's a huge amount of additional dollars for education, for reinvestment back into the community. But I want to be very clear that in a permitting cycle, when the next step occurs in this process, there are some very sophisticated people in the room that think about these issues that you've raised tonight around school population and the cost of those issues. And I can assure you, people in this room are gonna have very strong opinions about unit mix, and when I say unit mix, how many three bedrooms, four bedrooms, one bedrooms, studios will be in these buildings? And that will heavily drive the impact to the school system. And so, to the extent we as a developer could partner with the city and craft a unit mix that doesn't burden the city with a lot of responsibility, but gives them a big additional tax revenue collection, it kind of becomes a win-win. And so, you know, what I want to assure you is, that process is gonna take some time to get through with the councilors probably here, and with you and other residents that have concerns outside of just unit mix, like screening and like privacy and all of those issues.
Thanks. Also, Council, Councilor Brown?
Thank you, President Osing. So what I was just, what's going through my mind right now as I'm listening to the residents' concerns is that, just potentially, say you didn't get the zoning overlay approval and the property went back up for sale, I, I'm concerned that somebody could potentially come in and build something by right that would actually be what the residents do not want to see.
Right.
In their neighborhood. So that's what, from hearing what you said today to answer people's questions about the environmental pieces and what you're already intending to do, my question kind of just centered around wanting to know and hear out loud what...
Yeah, I mean, some of the things that we looked at when we bought the parcel and we ruled out pretty quickly were like a big hotel and conference center in that location, because it just didn't fit the characteristic of the neighborhood. There's a huge demand, I mean, the hockey rink in your community generates 60,000 room nights of rentals, it's a, it's a big, my son plays hockey, God rest his soul, west hill, I told the story before dinner tonight, what an amazing guy he was, but, long story short, is, that doesn't sort of fit in that neighborhood, and I get it. Like, I wouldn't want a hotel and a conference center at the end of a long road where, you know, there's a ball field on the right when you pull in, but I feel like bluntly, if we were to cut and run from this thing and even get out even on it at four and a half million, somebody's gonna come in and put that in by right, and there's not gonna be a lot of communities say, there's, it's gonna be like, this is what we're allowed to do, and it's a profitable return on investment for us, and we're gonna, we're gonna build it by right. So I, that's not, that's not in our plans, and not things that we've taken any time, kind of, because you gotta spend money to evaluate these feasibilities of these projects, and, you know, we tried to put the time and energy into listening to what probably fit there relative to what's been there and still give the city some additional tax base. Warehouses, labs, you know, Arthur and I talked back like five years ago about maybe it would be a big life science lab center. That whole market has just died. There's almost nothing going on in lab right now. We have a project in Waltham permitted for 130,000, and, you know, we're lucky to find a tenant in 10 years there, but, and that's closer to Cambridge, which is much better. But, you know, those are some of the other uses that could be there, and I just, I drive up that road, and I don't think it, I don't think it really fits, you know?
You good, Councilor Brown?
Thank you.
Any other city councils, Councilor Ormer?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for your honesty about the status of your ordeals trying to get industrial, commercial people into your properties. You know, we're hearing different views from different agencies about how good it might be, but you just mentioned, it's not as good as maybe what it's being projected as. I think Councilor Brown asked this question, but I didn't hear the answer. If the overlay is approved, what can you do by right? And what I'm curious about, how many units can you have by right?
I don't think it's by right, it's special permit that we're looking for an overlay that would still, you'd still retain all the control, and I want to be very clear about that, unless I've made any mistakes, George, you could back me up on that, but...
That's absolutely right, we're proposing this with special permit approval by city council.
Yeah.
The only thing we propose in front of you, you have to go through this council, you have to approve it.
Yeah, and that's a great question, because I think the community should know, this hearing isn't about if they gave us an overlay, we get to go build these apartments. This is us looking for the first step, where the community has the choice later to reject it through a special permit.
So indeed, we don't know how many units you may propose, this is about the zoning requests, not about where you're going, even though you're showing...
Yeah, I'm trying to be very open and candid.
...a general idea of what you're looking at.
Yes.
But we're not for sure what you're proposing yet, but, you know, because I can understand the residents, will it be five floors? Will it be three floors?
Right.
Will it look like condominiums, or it sounds like it'll look like office? Would the, you mentioned it, but again, it's about the zoning, will the footprint increase? And you've already mentioned that. So the one thing I'd like to say, though, is, and we should check into this, we may have to do this all over again if they were not properly notified, so I would ask our city clerk to check into that, to make sure they're properly notified.
So it's a zoning change, zoning change doesn't require notification to residents?
It's by courtesy, then, on a zoning change, it's not by requirements?
Advertisements are placed, that's what's required.
It's just advertisement, okay.
And if I may, the parcels, the owner of the parcels that were originally included in the zoning overlay, I had sent them certified mail, letting them know what's going on to engage in conversation, but beyond that, it was the advertising by the local newspaper that was done on April 5th, I believe.
I can see how things could get missed if that's the way it works, obviously. Probably not to your mistake, but I'm glad the residents found out and are here at the meeting, because it's important that they hear this, and after hearing what you just heard, I'm sure you're gonna go out now and try to reach to the people that spoke. So again, a lot of my questions will be at the point of special permit. I appreciate your response to your problems right now there. I'm gonna be interested at that point on how many units, height of the buildings, the bedroom count, as you mentioned, per unit, you know, what will that draw? If we have 53 bedrooms and, you know, that's gonna draw a lot of families, obviously, and Marlboro does have a school need, you know, but again, we're here for the zoning, and I'm gonna stick to that. Again, most of my questions will come up in special permit, but I'm gonna have to be convinced, because in all respects, if these buildings were filled, I wish they were, and I'm sure you do too.
Right.
With occupants, what's the value of that versus the value of residential?
Yeah, I think in this thing, I'll tell you directly, in its heyday, I'm guestimating without looking, having it in front of me, you know, it's probably on a great, best day, $15 million valuation. In a residential capacity, it's probably valued at 50 to 60 million in valuation to the city. I think that we would be ready, willing, and able in a special permit to bring to the teaching community and to the counseling community a study that would show, this is the likely bedroom mix, and this is what it likely generates for students. I think it's a very valid concern that every community has, but if you do that right at this level and manage that mix well, you probably end up with very few students. And you end up with new, young... And you end up with new, young professionals that are living in, working in your community and are buying and investing in the community. They're not transient renters. I mean, we, what we would not, and I listened to Arthur, you know, back in the day. He's like, David, I got enough rental product. I don't want any, see another project. And, and I never came before you. I think this is a little different situation, yeah.
So if I could add, Council Orm, if you take the face value of what Mr. Ferris is saying of a $60 million project versus a $4.5 million project, the difference is about $880,000 in additional taxes yearly to the city.
Thank you, Mr. President. And just help me with the map, the plot plan you have up there, the mixed-use development. Where's William Street? And where's St. Mary's Credit Union right now?
Right here is, is William Street.
Okay, thank you.
This is the parking lot for St. Mary's Credit Union, but you can't see that building yet. The baseball fields is up here.
Council Vital, they're not going to hear you at home without a microphone.
But I appreciate the fact that Council Vital just pointed out William Street's on the top of the, the plot plan being shown, and St. Mary's Credit Union that's housed up there is past that parking lot shown on the top as well. So these buildings here are the lower buildings. There's another building where St. Mary's Credit Union is, correct? Okay, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Council Orm. Any other questions from the councilors? Council Robey.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before I ask my questions, I will alert the public to the fact that this was also referred to the planning board. It is a zoning change, and all zoning changes go to the council for a public hearing and the planning board for a public hearing. Unfortunately, their communication is, is a little late, but look for a future planning board public hearing where you can go and offer the same comments. They will then be offering their comments to the city council as we move forward. Mr. Ferris, I tried today to find the fact that this property was sold to Ferris Development. I can't find anything. You have indicated that you, you have purchased it. It's not a purchase and sale agreement. If this overlay goes through, you own the property outright?
Yes, we do. And to full transparency to this council, you know, we originally were studying uses, and we heard some of the feedback around contractor stuff. We originally had a lender lined up to follow through and buy this for a contractor by-right kind of use in that area. And, you know, ultimately, the valuations that they saw at the finished product made them pull out from financing. And so we were actually scheduled to close probably three months ago, and we were lucky that we had a strong lending relationship that saw the vision and had heard about Marlboro working with some other developer that they, that you guys worked with. And Berkshire Bank stepped forward and did, did the loan to help us complete the purchase, probably, I'm guessing, a month ago.
Thank you. And Mr. Clerk, did you put up, onto the city website, the map that was sent to the council or just this?
Here, it's not on the website. Did you want...
Well, I, I guess because the original document that we were sent is different than the map that we were sent today. So there are two pieces of property that are no longer included, but I guess my concern is you do not own two pieces of the property that you show as being part of the overlay.
No, yeah.
So you don't have standing to include them, at least in my opinion.
Well, so we're, we're asking for the overlay area. We have two of the parcels that are in the overlay area, and we've met with St. Mary's, who are supportive, and we're actually working with their council, who's here with us this evening. And, and just, just for clarification, the, the ownership is probably held in an affiliate entity that I own and control called FD Ferris Development 130 Lazott Drive LLC.
Okay.
Yes.
Hopefully, that will be a public record available soon because I can't find it looking at the sex registry or...
Yeah, it's probably in the last month, so I'm not sure when the registry deeds will update it and everything.
Yeah, it's, it's not there now. Anyway, so I guess that, that second part is a concern, the fact that you do not own two of the pieces of property that if this zoning overlay goes through, excuse me, would actually be impacted, and then they would be able to do what is in the overlay. So what you're asking for in the overlay is multifamily dwelling, self-service storage facility, and contractor's yard by special permit. That's what's in the language that we have as the draft. You're now saying you really don't want the contractor yard.
Well, I'm, I'm saying the contractor yard seemed to be like negatively received by multiple butters in the community. And so if the preference is residential only, we're happy to go forward. But if the councilor so desired to have, you know, 20 or 30 small businesses in the lower parking lot area, we, we would certainly, you know, adapt the plan and, 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 and meet with the council to, to make something that works for the community.
All right.
And the residents, most important.
So maybe you are not aware that this parcel is zoned limited industrial, and under our current code and the table of uses under 65018, contractor's yards by special permit is already allowed
Right.
in limited industrial.
Exactly, but the storage component of it isn't allowed. And we did a facility you could, you could see in Southborough where we had a very similar building that you could drive by and see, which is at 250 Turnpike Road in Southborough, an almost similar situation where, you know, 10 years, no office tenants would rent it, and we converted into a self-storage contractor yard facility. But this location, it just didn't feel like it was going to be a good fit for the community.
And we don't have something called self, we don't have something called self-storage contractor facility. We have contractor yards.
Right.
And we have self-storage, which is not allowed in limited industrial.
Correct, yes.
So that may be confusing to the, to the public.
Council Robey, if I may interject just momentarily, I just have the table of uses pulled up right now, and contractor's yard, as of right now, is not allowed in the industrial zone.
Yes, it's
Okay, then I...
Go all the way to the bottom.
It's limited industrial.
There's contractor yards and storage yards that are listed under 65018.
So that's
Special permit.
That's limited industrial. We're in the industrial zone?
No.
I thought you were LI.
It's limited industrial.
You were LI.
We're LI?
You're LI, yes. So contractor yards, I mean, there has to be the property owner giving somebody permission and requesting it, but they are currently allowed. So to me, to have them be on the overlay when they're already allowed on the underlay is not really necessary, but we can talk about that as this moves forward. The other question that I had, let me get my, our code has 12% affordable, not 15. So if we get to that point with a special permit for housing...
We were actually proposing the 15 as a way to exceed what, yeah, I realized 12 was the minimum.
12 is what we have. Okay, so I guess at this point, we will wait, the planning board will be having their public hearing at some point in the future.
Probably early June.
We will wait for their recommendation to us at some point. Then this will come to Urban Affairs. There will be a Urban Affairs meeting, and we will take up the, the matter at that point. Thank you.
Any other councilors with any questions? Council Vital.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a real simple question. I drove up there last week, and I noticed a bunch of folks doing construction on the property already. I was curious on what they were doing.
Well, we just pulled a demo permit. We're moving out all the old furniture that was left by the office tenant. And I believe our construction manager met with the building inspector today, and they filed the building demo permit to just gut the inside. It's a functionally obsolete interior at this point.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Council Vital. Any other questions from the councilors? Questions from the councilors? Any questions from the councilors? Hearing none, I closed that portion of the public hearing and the entire public hearing, and this is in Urban Affairs. Thank you, Mr. Ferris.
Thank you, everyone. Have a nice evening.
Agenda item number five. Communication from the mayor regarding notification of extension of temporary appointment pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 41, Section 61A of Theodore L. Scott, as interim commissioner of the Department of Public Works, for an additional 60-day term to expire June 19, 2024. Councilon Avan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Hopefully, this is the, one of the last one of these we'll receive, and we will have a permanent commissioner named soon. But in the meantime, motion to accept and place on file.
Motion made and seconded to accept and place on file the communication. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, are those in favor? Opposed, the communication is filed 11-0. Agenda item number six.
Communication from the mayor regarding grant acceptances in the amount of $250,000 awarded to the police department for reconstruction of the parking lot at the police station, and $175,000 awarded to the fire department for the purchase of a CAD dispatch system as part of the fiscal year 2024 state budget earmarked funding.
Council Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to approve both grants, please.
Motion's made and seconded to approve both grants. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, are those in favor? Opposed, both grants are approved, 11-0. Agenda item number seven.
Communication from the mayor regarding transfer request in the amount of $2,784,983 from free cash to capital outlay to fund the capital improvements for the police department, fire department, inspectional services, and Department of Public Works.
Council Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to refer to the finance committee, please.
Motion made and seconded to refer to the finance committees. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, are those in favor? Opposed, it's going to finance, 11-0. Agenda item number eight.
Communication from City Solicitor Jason Grossfield regarding proposed zoning amendment to Chapter 650 zoning to create the Donald Lynch Boulevard overlay district.
Council Robey.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to refer this to Urban Affairs and the planning board, set a public hearing for May 20th, and advertise.
Motion made and seconded to refer to Urban Affairs, the planning board, set a public hearing for May 20th, and to advertise. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, are those in favor? Opposed, it's going to Urban, the planning board, with a May 20th public hearing and advertise, 11-0. Agenda item number nine.
Communication from Assistant City Solicitor Jeremy McManus regarding opinion relative to special permit application by Alta Behavioral Health LLC for Donald J. Lynch Boulevard, Order Number 24-100-9099.
Council Robey.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to accept and place on file the communication.
Motion made and seconded to accept and place on file the communication. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, are those in favor? Opposed, communication is filed 11-0. Agenda item number 10.
Communication from City Clerk Stephen Carrigan regarding approval of image cast precinct optical tabulators pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 54, Section 34.
Councilon Avan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to approve the use of the new machines.
Motion's made and seconded to approve the use of the new machines, and for those councilors that haven't seen it, it is behind Counselor Preciado. The TV wants to take a look at it. On the motion to approve the use of the new voting machines, are those in favor? Opposed, the voting machines are approved for use, vote of 11-0. Good luck, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you.
Agenda item number 11.
Application for renewal of junk dealer, second-hand dealer license, Gerald Dumas, DBA Dumas &amp; Sons, Secondhand Store, 65 Mechanic Street.
Council Anders.
Thank you, Mr. President. Please refer to the...
Motion's made and seconded to refer to the public services committee. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, are those in favor? Opposed, it's going to public service, 11-0. Agenda item number 12.
Application for renewal of junk dealer, second-hand dealer license, Antoine Bittar, DBA Hanush Jewelers, 601 Donald J. Lynch Boulevard.
Council Anders.
Mr. President, I'm going to recommend that we grant him his license. He's done his honorary work, and the chief has given us the, the idea that we should give him, you know, good in the past, and so my motion would be to approve the renewal of the junk dealer's license.
Motion made and seconded to approve the renewal of the junk dealer's license. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, are those in favor? Opposed, junk dealer license is approved, 11-0. Agenda item number 13.
Application for taxi livery license from Adam Smith, DBA First Class Limo Inc., to operate a livery service with one vehicle at 715 Robin Hill Street.
Council Anders.
Again, Mr. President, I'm going to recommend that we refer this to the public service committee. This is the first shot that we're applying for the license. He's under his authority, but I think it's, it's wise for the committee to have him in and discuss what his game plan is.
Motion made and seconded to refer to the public services committee. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, are those in favor? Opposed, it's going to public service, 11-0. Agenda item number 14.
Minutes of boards, commissions, and committees.
Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Motion to accept and place on file the minutes of the boards, commissions, and committees.
Motion's made and seconded to accept and place on file all the minutes. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, are those in favor? Opposed, minutes are filed, 11-0. Agenda item 15. Claims. Council Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to send the claims to legal department.
Motion made and seconded to send the claims to the legal department. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, are those in favor? Opposed, claims are going to legal, 11-0. Reports of committees. Council Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Finance committee met on April 17, 2024, meeting convened at 6:30 PM. We had one item on the agenda that evening, Order Number 24-109129. Communication from Mayor Dumas together with two transfer requests from Economic Development Revenue Fund to the Marlboro Economic Development Corporation in the amount of $762,465 to fund the FY 2025 operating budget, and $150,000 to replenish the existing toolbox fund to continue to support MEDC Small Business Financial Incentive Grant Programs. The chair read the communication from Mayor Dumas. Director Harris discussed the proposed operating budget and the toolbox program with councilors. Councilors were extremely supportive of the efforts by Director Harris and her staff. Although Council Orm supported additional funding to replenish the toolbox, he expressed concerns regarding other aspects of the budget and opposed the increase in the part-time administrative position from part-time to full-time with benefits accounting for approximately $20,000. On a motion by Council Facillo, seconded by Chair Irish, the finance committee recommends approval of the transfer in the amount of $762,465 to fund the FY 2025 operating budget. Vote carried four to one with Council Orm opposed. On a motion by Council Facillo, seconded by Chair Irish, the finance committee recommend approval of the transfer of $150,000 to replenish the toolbox fund. The vote did carry five to zero. The meeting adjourned at 7:19 PM. That is the end of my report.
Go on.
Thank you, Mr. President. And if I'd like to make a public service announcement, the finance committee will be meeting on April 29, 2024 at 7:00 PM. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Irish. Any other reports of committees? Council Robey.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Urban Affairs Committee met on Wednesday, April 17, at 7:30. We took up two orders. The first was Order Number 23-109137, a communication from Attorney William Bruin on behalf of Robert Ledoux regarding a request for the release of low-income deed restriction on the unit at 66 Village Drive, over 55 condominiums on Route 20 East. Attorney Bruin had sent a letter that the chair read, a portion of detailing the master deed for the property, which limits the occupancy to over 55. The special permit for the project designated two units is affordable, and the resale of the units limited to a price not greater than the maximum price allowed in this area of affordable owner-occupied single-family townhouse units according to the current DHCD criteria for affordability. Unfortunately, DHCD never approved and will not approve these as affordable, therefore the request to have the affordability removed. The chair has spoken with legal counsel, and the suggestion was for the committee to endorse the concept of releasing the affordable housing restriction, refer it to legal to draft the proper language that would be on a future council agenda. Councilor Navan moved to refer the request to release the affordable housing restriction on Unit 366 Village Drive to the legal department to be put in proper form, and on a future council agenda. It was seconded, and the motion carried five to zero. And the second order was Number 23-109035, a communication from Viewpoint Sign &amp; Honning on behalf of Best Western Royal Plaza Hotel for replacement of a freestanding EMC sign at 181 Boston Post Road West. This item remains in committee as we discuss with legal and the building commissioner how to proceed going forward with some of the concerns that the council has. I will ask for a suspension tonight to take up Order Number 23-109137 so it can go to the solicitor.
The motion made and seconded to suspend the rules for order number 9137 on the deed restriction removal. All those in favor of the suspension? Opposed, suspension carries 11-0. Council Roby?
I move to refer this to the solicitor to have it be put in proper form and on a future agenda.
Motion made and seconded to refer to the legal department to put in proper form so we can look at it at a future agenda. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, are those in favor? Opposed, it's going to legal, the put in proper format, the vote is 11-0. Anything else?
I will also do a PSA. Urban Affairs is meeting also on the 29th at 7:30. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Roby. Any other reports of committees? Seeing none, agenda item 16.
Order number 24-109118, transfer request in the amount of $477,122.41 from PEG Funds to the Marlboro Cable Trust to fund capital items in the operation of WMCT TV for fiscal year 2025. Recommendation of the finance committee is to approve.
Council Irish?